DEP's virtual public hearing for the inland flood protection rule proposal. We're very happy that you're joining us today. My name is Lauren Zerillo and I am a regulatory officer for the Department of Environmental Protection in the Office of Legal and Regulatory Affairs, and I will be your moderator today. In a few moments, I will turn the hearing over to our hearing officer, Vincent Mazai, New Jersey's state floodplain administrator. Just as a reminder, we will not be answering any questions tonight. Instead, we will be receiving your testimony on this rule proposal. I would now like to discuss some logistics before we get started with the hearing content. Please be aware that this hearing is being recorded as well as transcribed by a court stenographer. As such, it is imperative that people do not interrupt others or speak out of turn. Doing so may result in you being muted or removed from the hearing. Due to the large number of individuals who have signed up to provide comments today, and in an effort to ensure that everyone who is interested in speaking will be heard, we will be limiting comments to two minutes. The hearing will remain open until all testimony from those that had previously signed up have had an opportunity to speak. If there is any time at the end of the hearing, we may call on those who have not signed up in advance or signed up late. In addition to the two minutes of oral comments, we encourage you to submit comments electronically on the webpage indicated in the proposal document or by hard copy to the address provided in the proposal. The comment period remains open until February 3rd, 2023. And all comments, whether received orally here today, electronically, or in hard copy through the mail, are considered equally, and we will be responding to, will be responded to in any adoption document produced as part of this rulemaking. Now I want to discuss some of the technical functions of Microsoft Teams meeting. Some may be familiar with Teams and others may not. There are some functions we will be using today and others that we will be not. So we will only be taking oral testimony during the hearing today. When you are called on, you may provide oral testimony with or without your camera activated. We will not be taking any testimony through the chat function. The chat function will only be used for anybody having technical difficulties. We will not be using the hand raising function. Please do not utilize these functions as we try to move through everyone's testimony. Please be aware that we will be calling on individuals alphabetically by their last names of those individuals who registered. Importantly, please, when you are called on by Mr. Mazai, spell your first and last name and note any affiliation so that the court reporter can accurately record your testimony. The court reporter may also request you to repeat a word here and there, but hopefully we'll hear what you have to say clearly. When called on by Mr. Mazai, the hearing officer, you may unmute yourself, which is the microphone function. If you look at the top right-hand corner of your screen, there is a little microphone. It has a slash through it right now. You will click on that and you will be unmuted. Next to the microphone, there's a camera, looks like a little video. Again, if you wish to provide video testimony, unclick that and you'll go, your cam, with your camera will be turned on. When the slash is off, you are unmuted and may begin your testimony. We will be tracking the two minutes on the time as shown. We're going to be pulling up a two-minute timer so that everyone can see how much time is left. We reserve the right to notify you that your two minutes has ended and that we have to unfortunately move on to the next individual. We will attempt to give you time at the end of the hearing should you need it. However, we do remind you that all testimony, including written testimony, will be considered in the same manner. We will reserve the right to mute or remove any individuals who do not abide by these rules. If you are attending this meeting via telephone, which there are a number of people who are doing so, when your name is called, please use star six to mute and unmute yourself. As noted in the New Jersey Register, in order to submit written comments, please use our comment portal at www nj.gov/dep/rules comments and select DEP docket number 08-22-10, the inland flood protection rule, or by paper with the address noted in the New Jersey Register. Again, the comment period closes February 3rd, 2023, and all testimony, whether given through this hearing or submitted in writing, will be given consideration. We will be taking an approximate five to 10-minute break at 3:00 PM. Again, welcome to our virtual hearing on the inland flood protection rule, and I will now hand it over to Mr. Mazai, who will serve as your hearing officer for today.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me and you can see the PowerPoint that I just put up.
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Lauren. Today, we're pleased to accept testimony on New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's proposal to amend its stormwater management rules at NJAC 7:8 and our flood hazard area control act rules at 7:13. Just a couple of slides to make sure that everyone understands the purpose of today's hearing. And let me pull this up so I can see it myself. Okay, so I am the New Jersey State Floodplain Administrator, and I'll be your hearing officer today. And as I mentioned, this inland flood protection rule that was proposed on December 5th applies to two sets of rules, our stormwater management rules and our flood hazard area control act rules. And there are five key points to this proposal. One is that the proposal raises fluvial, non-title designed flood elevations by two feet when state or FEMA mapping is used. So it's two feet higher than what we regulate today, which goes up and then it goes out. Second is that it requires the use of future projected precipitation when calculating the design floods. So if mapping is not used and someone is calculating the flood hazard area, it would be based on not today's precipitation, but future precipitation and runoff that would occur from the year 2100 based on projections that we have. The third piece is that we want to ensure that any permits or authorizations that we issue under our flood hazard rules meet minimum NFIP requirements and standards and relevant sections of the Uniform Construction Code. It's important that the government speaks with one voice on these matters. The fourth point is that, and this is very similar to number two, is that if you're designing a stormwater best management practice, BMP, if you're designing a basin or a piping system, it has to be designed not to manage only today's storms, but also anticipated future storms. And then finally, the rulemaking precludes the use of the rational modified rational method for certain stormwater calculations. As Lauren mentions, the department encourages electronic submission of comments, and this is, you can go to NJDEP's webpage and go to our rulemaking page, and you can have this link, and then you can enter your comments. That way, you can also upload documents that we will be able to read then. Written comments can also be submitted by mail to Lauren Zerillo Esquire at this address here, which is also in the proposal. And the close of the comment period is February 3rd. So just a last reminder, when your name is called, please unmute your microphone and share your camera if you desire to. You don't need to share your camera, but need to share your microphone so we can hear you. Please state and spell your first and last name for the record. Please state your affiliation, and as Lauren mentioned, the testimony will be limited to two minutes per individual because we want to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. So upon completion of testimony, please mute your microphone and unshare your camera. And with that, stop sharing. And at that, pull up the list of commenters. So as Lauren mentioned, we will be accepting comments alphabetically from those who signed up through our portal. So the first person that I would like to call is Arthur Anderson. Is Arthur Anderson with us today? Okay, Mr. Anderson, if you show up later, you can, if you, if you're having trouble with your mutes function, you can send a chat and we can get back to you. I'll go on to the next person, Barbara Andrew. Okay, again, if Barbara Andrew is, wants to speak later, let us know through the chat function. Martha Arens Civia. Okay, go into the next person on the list. Again, you can circle back later if Martha comes on. Bushra Aspari. So I'm assuming that most people signed up so they could hear comments that other people were providing. So I'll just go through this list a little more quickly because that way we have enough time for everyone. Carol Ballmer. Okay, hearing nothing from Carol, I will go to the next name, Jim Bay.
Hello, Carol Ballmer.
Hi, Carol.
Yay!
You made it.
Yay! Okay, all right, all right. Listen, I, I real, go ahead. You first, you first.
No, we're here to listen to you, so please let us know your thoughts.
Okay, my two minutes, I hope, I hope my two minutes start.
Yeah, you're good, you're good.
Okay, all right. Thank, first of all, thank you for this opportunity to comment and participate. I also have an echo, so I'm hearing myself talk, which is not enjoyable. Okay, I'm a former hometown township elected official, committee person, deputy mayor, environmental commission chair, zoning board vice chair, planning board member, state show regional sewage authority commissioner, among many other public services. Okay, I've been working on DEP watershed issues discrepancies since 1983. I personally participated intimately with saving close to five, 800 acres of watershed lands for the swimming room or the reservoir or watershed. Boy, this is really disconcerting. Okay, including 400 acres close to my farm, adjacent to my farm. Okay, I plan on submitting written comments as well by February 3rd, the cutoff date. I want to wholeheartedly agree with Mike Fazaro, Policy Director of nonprofit watershed institute. There should be a hold, number one, hold on all applications associated with watersheds, especially for potable water supply resources. Two, the consistency determination cross-reference between DEP departments and agents are severely lacking. Case in point is a pending application by Coltonic Manor in Coltonic Township, originally approved for 48.
Excuse me, Ms. Ballmer, I hate to interrupt you, but unfortunately, your two minutes is complete.
Oh, my gosh, you're kidding.
I'm so sorry, but we look forward to reading your comments that you're going to be sending in to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list is Jim Bay. Okay, next would be Eric Benson. Okay, next would be Vincent Blayle. All right, next on the lists, and again, anyone who's missed their call can let us know, and we'll circle back to you. Kate Boycourt.
Sorry, mute problems. Hi, I'm ready to kick off. Thank you so much, Vince. My name is Kate Boycourt, and I'm the Director for Climate Resilient Coast and Watersheds for the Environmental Defense Fund in New York and New Jersey. And on behalf of our many members and activists in the state, I thank you for the opportunity to testify today. First, we just thank you for your leadership on this. We've had tremendous damages from storms, and we will continue to, as this climate change worsens. And the establishment of these rules and the forthcoming real rules are a tremendous opportunity to stem that tide of building practices that exacerbate flood risks. And we overwhelmingly agree that the economic benefits of implementing these rules are overwhelmingly positive. So we support these initiatives with several specific comments and questions as we work to finalize our comments. First, on the changes to stormwater rules, we support the use of the moderate climate change scenario for the 10 and 100-year storms through 2029. And also the use of change and adjustment factors to do so through updating NOAA Atlas 14 data and the stormwater quantity requirements. These are very consistent with how other design guidelines have been developed and Hoboken, the Water Finance Design Guidelines and others that really reflect the intel of the design industry for how to adapt to these changing futures. However, we are concerned about the potential unintended consequences associated with quantity updates without strengthening incentives or requirements for best management practices for natural nature-based infrastructure and green infrastructure. So if we really want to get to where we need to go there, we need to think about that at the same time. So we encourage you to include design guidelines and their measures to explicitly require prioritize those best practices. Regarding the increased fluvial design flood elevation, we strongly support increasing the design flood elevation and adding additional areas to the flood hazard area. Data collection has shown that several areas have regularly equaled or exceeded FEMA's 500-year floodplain and existing departments flood hazard area. We have several specific comments that I don't have time to give today, but are related to Freeboard Method 6, visualization and data methods, and also support for best practices. So I guess I'll leave it there and encourage you again to look at those design guidelines and other practices for incentivizing best practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Okay, whoops. All right, the next person who signed up, Anne Marie Bricees. Okay, next person would be Laney Britton. Elizabeth Brown. Alina Budin.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Elizabeth Brown, yes.
Oh, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just a couple of brief comments. I'm just a citizen. I'm not officially an activist or anything like that. I live in Princeton, New Jersey. I'm very concerned about the way flooding and people's homes has got worse and worse and worse over the past 10 years, probably due to overdevelopment. I'm also concerned that the town keeps issuing permits for very destructive structures such as enormous underground garages. And I do hope that these, that municipal governments start paying attention to you people. And I thank you for the wonderful work you're doing. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Elizabeth, the next person, I'll go back to Alina Budin. Okay, Laney Britton. Oh, wait, did I go? I think it went upwards.
I believe it's Alina.
Yes, next would be Richard Butch. Okay, Ray Cantor.
Thank you, Vince. My name is Ray Cantor, C-A-N-T-O-R. I am with the New Jersey Business and Industry Association. We will be submitting more detailed comments, so I'll try and be as brief as I can since I have no choice. We are generally supportive of the department's efforts to bring this stormwater and flood rules, the data and the statements that you're using, looking at current scientific numbers. However, we're not going to weigh in today on the two foot. We will get back to that later on. We do have three concerns we want to raise today. One is dealing with the grandfather provisions, dealing with properties that are currently outside a flood zone, but under this new rule will be mapped as a flood zone. Those properties have placed extensive investment and time to do their projects. And if this rule goes in without proper grandfather provisions, and we don't think the ones in there right now are effective, these properties will have lost investment, will have to start over again in the permitting, financing, and design of their projects. It is unfair. As a very quick example, you can have one unit in the flood zone right now with 1,000 outside. You will be grandfathered under this rule. But if you have 500 outside, none in, you don't have that grandfather. It makes no sense. We also are concerned that the grandfather provisions, which allow for technical completeness, do not allow under the department's practices for those projects to get grandfathers if they are currently seeking a sewer service amendment. The department takes too long to approve SSAs. As a result of that, these projects will lose their grandfather ability. You need to fix that. And finally, I'll just mention in my last 10 seconds that this bill really is all about stormwater infrastructure, or it should be. But yet, the department has not made a serious effort to try to promote capital investment to solve the real problem, again, which is inadequate stormwater facilities. We thank you, we will be submitting more comments later on.
Thank you very much, Ray. Okay, next would be Tracy Carluccio. Okay, again, we can circle back if someone wasn't, wasn't able to unmute themselves in time. George Casa. Okay, Kip Cherry.
Yes, this is she.
Good afternoon. Yes, please, thank you.
My name is Kip Cherry, Conservation Chair for Central Group of the Sierra Club and a member of the Sierra and New Jersey Executive Committee. I'm here to testify on the proposed inland flood protection rule. It is critical that we proceed with this rule as soon as possible. As we cope with global warming, it is critical that potential flooding from development projects be regulated. I'm currently involved in providing environmental testimony at hearings on several projects, all of which face major catastrophic flooding issues. In each instance, I have referenced projections of future rainfall made by Cornell University, which I believe has been the basis for these new regulations. One of the new projects where it is clear that flooding is a big issue, but where it might slip through the new regulations, this is the proposed Coltonic Manor site on a stream called Yellow Brook in Monmouth County. This 360-unit project is to be located on a site originally approved for only 48 units. Our argument is that the proposed project is really a new project and should be reevaluated by DEP. Another project that is of immediate concern that may also slip through the cracks is something called Bridgepoint Industrial Park in West Windsor, New Jersey, a gigantic project of warehouses totaling 5.5 million square feet. And again, it appears as the application has been considered closed, even though there is much information that we don't know regarding extreme flooding and stormwater implications. In addition, I want to add that the New Jersey Department of Transportation and other governmental agencies building roads should not put off incorporating these new rules in their designs. And I want to strongly recommend that DEP move forward with amendments to the flood hazard coastal zone, freshwater wetlands, and stormwater rules immediately. The same sites that need the inland flood protection rule need these amendments. So I'll stop right there. Thank you very much, and we have more detailed testimony that we're submitting in writing.
Very good, thank you, Kip. Okay, next is Jennifer Coffey.
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Jen.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am the Executive Director of ANJAC, the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions. We are absolutely supportive of these rules and encourage the department to adopt them as soon as possible. They are a long time coming, and in fact, too long in coming. We have seen for years now with the impacts of Hurricane Henry, ISIS, Ieda, Sandy, and those that are unnamed. We have seen flash flooding, we have seen people lose their lives, we have seen billions of dollars in economic damage. These rules are about saving lives, protecting communities, protecting our environment, and protecting our economy. They should be just the first in the suite of NJPACT rules, New Jersey Protecting Against Climate Threat rules that the department issues forward this year so that we can protect our communities and build a safer, more equitable New Jersey for this generation and for the next. We do have some concerns about the language as it is currently written with regards to transportation projects. You've heard from some, and I'm sure you'll hear from more. We are concerned that the language is too loose to allow for the construction of transportation projects without adhering to the enhanced standards regarding flooding. We know that with climate change, the past is no longer a predictor of the future. And so we need to ensure that all of our infrastructure is working to be accessible and usable with the threats of climate change that are expanding. And so we want to make sure that any new roads that are built are not simply stranding people in areas where they will be left because of flooding. We will be providing more written comments, but we thank the department for putting these forward today.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, next person would be Holly Cox.
My name is Holly Cox. I'm a 24-year New Jersey resident. I'm here to ask you to please strengthen and implement the new NJDEP inland flood protection rules ASAP. Look around you, it is impossible to ignore the climate crisis here in New Jersey. Ball me 65-degree days a couple of weeks ago in January, over one month of 90-plus degree days and barely any rain this last summer. Drought restrictions 2020 and 2021 were the second and third warmest years in New Jersey's recorded history. More intense storms like Sandy and Ida, whose record floodwaters killed 30 New Jerseians, and a 2020 NJDEP report that New Jersey sea levels are projected to rise more than five feet by the end of this century if emissions are not drastically cut. And at this rate, they are not being cut nearly fast enough. In fact, the sea level along New Jersey's coast has risen 1.5 feet since 1911, more than double the global average, according to a 2019 Rutgers report. Although Governor Murphy ordered DEP to adopt these rules by January 2022, the Murphy administration has missed every deadline. Instead, builders, the road lobby, and big business interests have actively lobbied to stop these rules. Once again, corporate interests are running roughshod over the environment and what's best for New Jersey residents. So please, stand up and protect our New Jersey lives, property, businesses, and economy. Stop building in areas we know are susceptible to flooding. Adopt the new inland flood protection rules by May 1st and strengthen them by 1. Issue a moratorium on applicable pending permits. 2. Issue similar coastal wetland and stormwater rules. 3. Remove the exemption for DOT highways. 4. Expand the regulated floodplain to include all of the 500-year floodplain and base the area on future rainfall. 5. Prevent any new reconstructed or elevated structures in the 500-year floodplain or the flood hazard area. 6. Increase funding to blue acres. 7. Restore wide riparian areas that extend beyond the regulated floodplain to a natural vegetated condition and prohibit tree-cutting, land-clearing, or disturbance of native vegetation. 8. Enact stormwater best management practices that recharge precipitation through natural systems. And 9. Eliminate all combined sewer overflows. Governor Murphy is currently allowing seven fossil fuel projects to move forward in New Jersey.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cox, unfortunately, your two minutes is up, but we would definitely invite you to submit the remainder of your comments electronically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person would be Rachel Davis.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, I'm Rachel Davis, R-A-C-H-E-L-D-A-V-I-S. I'm the Public Policy and Justice Organizer for Water Spirit, a ministry of the Sisters of St. Joseph of Peace. On behalf of our thousands of members throughout the state and globe for 25 years, we thank you for the opportunity to speak. That said, these rules should have been in place already. We'll also be providing written comment. The inland flood protection rules should have been passed this summer. It was not, not because advocates didn't demand action. This is an economic justice issue, and the time is now for all property owners and operators to readjust infrastructure plans. We must consider our role as stewards of natural resources and the sacredness of these resources and our time on this beautiful planet. I urge every decision-maker, business owner, to invest in becoming a certified green infrastructure champion, as I have, with the Rutgers University Cooperative Extension, taught by Dr. Abrupta, which happens to start up again tomorrow. You can see our stormwater pages for more. Water Spirit co-hosted a webinar series focused on stormwater management and environmental justice funded by the Watershed Institute, we're echoing their comments for sure, to sound the alarm. Flooding, erosion, contaminated water, this is all a huge public health fiasco, and I cannot believe it's still going on. It will only increase as the storms continue, which they will, because we're continuing to invest in fossil fuel, which exacerbates these storms. We have experts in the state who have forecasted climate extremes. We all know better. We must do better together today. Water Spirit supports the proposed rules, except for the need to, as New Jersey leader Kim Gaddy also told press on Monday, remove the exemption for Department of Transportation and highways, which should be held to at least the same standard as everyone else. We urge you to adopt this proposal as quickly as possible, obviously, May first, the latest. And again, state leaders, please take action before another fossil fuel exacerbated storm thrusts New Jersey residents into survival mode yet again, causing sickness and death and all preventable property damage. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay, next person would be Doug Dean. Okay, hearing nothing from Doug, we will go to Lynn Durkey. Okay, uh, next would be Midora Falkenberg.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Hold on one second. Okay, my name is Midora, M E D O R A Falkenberg, F A L K E N B E R G. And I just want to make sure that the committee has heard, um, has read the twenty twenty New Jersey Scientific Report on Climate Change, published by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, because it outlines exactly a lot of things that Holly Cox earlier spoke to. New Jersey is warming faster than the rest of the Northeast region and the world. This warming means more water vapor is held. So our precipitation is going to go up and up and up. Um, I want to express my support for the rule, even though it needs strengthening, and that you should adopt the strengthened proposal as soon as possible, certainly by May first. Tell DEP that they should follow the precedents set by Bern, Keen, Florio, Whitman to protect the intended resource by issuing a moratorium on applicable permits, pending permits. Also, issue additionally related coastal wetland and stormwater rules now, instead of waiting for a final adoption of this proposed rule. Um, and then additionally, um, please remove the exemption for DOT highways, which should be held to the same strong standards as everyone else. Prevent any new reconstructed enlarged or elevated structures of any kind in the five-hundred-year floodplain or in the flood hazard area, which is greater as defined by future rainfall calculations. Elevating structures is not an effective approach because it still prevents the floodplain from functioning as it should, floodplains. But it also allows people and infrastructure to remain in the path of a flood endangering life and property and contributing to downstream damage. I support funding through the IRA and other programs must be used for blue acres, buying out repeatedly flooded properties. Additionally, eliminate all combined sewer overflows. Enact stormwater best management practices that must recharge precipitation through natural systems that maximize groundwater recharge. So the retention detention system not only prevent any increase in flood damages downstream, but also allow it to infiltrate where the precipitation lands, keeping it out of waterways and communities and feeding groundwater and vegetation. Thank you so much for your work. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, next on the list would be Kathleen Foley. Just a reminder to everyone who would like to speak, uh, when it comes to your, when your name is called, please unmute yourself. Okay, the next name is Stacy Fox.
I'm already unmuted. If you can hear.
Yes, we we can hear you. Thank you.
So, um, I'll send my more scientific written comments in, but I want to speak to everyone's heart right now. We all know what's best for New Jersey, and we all know why we're here and what we should be doing. And we all know that the pact rules were supposed to be enacted in June, but they were not because Governor Murphy is a paper tiger. He says, come up with the rules, solve the problems. But then when the builder's lobby says, oh, wait, no, we're gonna get hit in the wallet. We we don't want to lose investment money. Without any scientific evidence, they say, we don't see any imminent peril here, and the governor just complies. So that's the end of the pact rules being enacted as an emergency, and here we are now, hoping that the builder's lobby, who I believe Ray Cantor is here to represent, is not going to attempt to delay them again, which of course they are. He made a comment that they're gonna lose investment. And I am here to tell you that we don't need to care about that because we're gonna lose lives. New Jersey lost a lot of lives last year with Ida, and every year people die. And we don't need to worry about an investor's single loss because he needs to recalculate his stormwater management currently based on flood maps from nineteen ninety-nine. We know that that's just plain stupid, to put a shovel in the ground and give a pass to any company that wants to build anything based on storms in the past. As long as there is no shovel in the ground, there should not be a grandfather clause protecting them. There needs to be a pause on every single application. Until these inland flood rules are applied, we need not worry about a businessman's investment. We need to worry about billions of dollars lost in the future and in perpetuity, because these are permanent things that they would like to build. So I'm here to say no delays, no exemptions, no grandfathers. Please.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, the next person is, excuse me, Heidi Furman. Okay, the next person is Peggy Gallows.
That's me. Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Peggy Gallows, G A L L O S, and I'm testifying on behalf of the Association of Environmental Authorities. The Association welcomes the opportunity to talk today, and we expect to submit more detailed comments in the future. AEA commends the department for recognizing the need to review its flood hazard management and stormwater control regulations. The climate is changing because of the increase in greenhouse gas emissions. In New Jersey, the ferocity of storms has increased. An AEA member, water wastewater and solid waste utilities in the state have obviously been very heavily impacted by storms like Ida and Sandy and so on. As we review the draft rules more fully, we're hoping to better understand the impact of the proposed two-foot increase in the flood elevation. Clearly, more pipes, wellheads, manholes, pump stations, below-grade chambers, and other appurtenances will be in regulated areas when the new rules are adopted. Waste water treatment plants, the collection systems, pipes that carry them, and other ancillary structures are obviously all located near water bodies, and this is by design. Gravity sewer pipes follow the contour of the land. Wellheads and other facilities are in low-lying areas. The department is proposing amending the requirement for railroad roadway and parking area and has gone to great lengths to provide an exception for the new requirements for permitting for individual linear projects. The department explains this this exception by noting that strict compliance is not feasible. We would like to point out that linear water and wastewater projects and water wastewater appurtenances are necessarily located in low-lying areas, and like transportation projects, cannot easily be relocated. Pipes and appurtenances must be routinely accessed, inspected, and possibly repaired. Same thing with certain drinking water facilities as well. So we respect.
I'm sorry to interrupt you here, but you're two minutes of that.
All right. Well, we're just going to request a similar treatment. That's that's the gist of our our comments today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next person, and and I'm doing my best to make sure I pronounce everyone's name well. So if I mispronounce someone's name, I apologize. Um, next next name would be Kristy Garcia.
Let's.
Yes, hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Um, yes, my name is Kristy Garcia. I am a resident of the Green Hills community in Hillsborough. Excuse me. The I live near the Raritan River, and there's a swamp area behind us where there's a lot of water runoff. And, um, from what I've understood from the residents, I've been here for ten years. Over the past thirty years, the flooding's been increasingly, um, becoming a little bit more aggressive. And, um, with this past year of Ida, we had water from the first run of rain before the water in the river came up from the poor runoff in the swamp behind us. Um, we had never had water before, and it was due to the poor runoff and drainage that's there. And then the water came up from Raritan, and they were helicoptering and boating people out of our neighborhood. We had President Biden and Murphy at the end of our street talking because they couldn't get up our street. They were saying a lot of things, but none of the obvious, they're overbuilding and they're being approved to build. In the swampland behind our neighborhood, there are currently two proposals. And it seems like our last, our last hope is the DEP because they keep siding with the builder and the dollar and not our homes and our well-being. So, um, I just was hoping to be here today. That's all.
Thank you so much for your comments. Okay, the next person would be Sophie Glovier. Okay, uh, next would be Dennis Goldstein. And next would be Philip Hame. I'm sorry, someone is someone trying to speak? Don't want to miss anyone. Okay, again, if if we missed you, we'll we'll circle back and make sure that you have an opportunity to speak. Amy Hansen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thanks so much. Uh, I'm Amy Hansen, Policy Manager for New Jersey Conservation Foundation. Spelling of my name is A M Y H A N S E N. New Jersey Conservation Foundation supports new flood rule and raising the design flood elevation for the New Jersey DEP flood maps as well as FEMA maps. The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection should implement these rules as soon as possible to protect public health and safety and to lessen people's misery and death from the devastating floods that we know are sure to come due to the climate emergency. We hope the development community will act in the public's best interest by using the proposed rules now and all development projects going forward to protect people and our critical natural resources in our economy in New Jersey. We support the inland flood protection rules, requirements for stormwater best management practices to manage runoff for future storms. Using natural solutions and green infrastructure is the most effective and will cost less in the long run. As recent and not so recent deadly events have shown, it's no longer appropriate to base building regulations on precipitation forecasts from nineteen ninety-nine that don't reflect the bigger, more destructive and deadly storms now taking place, as well as all the impervious cover we have added to New Jersey. We must not keep building in harm's way, which unfairly impacts people in overburdened communities more than others. We can't keep paving over new ground. Too many victimized families, survivors of Hurricane Sandy, Ida, and more still suffering. We urge the DEP to adopt this rule as quickly as possible, and we will also submit written comments. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, the next person would be Allison Heroblock. And next would be Anne Huber.
Vince, um, we had Eric Benson attend, join the meeting, and he was asking if he could speak. He was on the list previously.
Oh, okay, no problem. Yes, Eric Benson, please.
Sorry, benefit of going early, but I I missed it early. Um, my name is Eric Benson, Clean Water Action, New Jersey Campaigns Director. My hometown, Montclair, New Jersey, is on the side of a mountain. During Ida, I was shot vacuuming the basement until the wee hours of the morning where I've never had to before. The People's Republic sided on the side of the mountain, made national news. People who have never experienced flooding before were feeling the effects firsthand. I'll be frank, there's no silver bullet here. Facing the facts, you shouldn't build on top of the mountain because it's going to have downstream impacts. People at the bottom of the mountain are increasingly in harm's way, and folks on the slope like me are hit with both feeling the growing effects and making it worse for those downstream. New Jersey's got nine million people, and we have to have someplace to live. So Clean Water Action supports expedited passage and demands that the proposed rule be strengthened. I also implore you to follow precedents set by Governors Byrne, Kane, Florio, and Whitman to protect intended resources by issuing a moratorium on applicable pending permits. It's also imperative, the New Jersey DEP issue additionally related coastal wetland and stormwater rules now, instead of waiting for the final adoption of this proposed rule. With all that stake for life and property, this rule to protect everybody, New Jersey is not doing enough to curb emissions. I don't have one, but if I had a Jersey Shore beach home with a third-story deck, I'd be shouting from it. New Jersey is behind on multiple rules, boilers, stationary sources, clean car, clean trucks, and environmental justice. What we experience time and time again is those with the means and resources will adopt and thrive. They will raise their homes, they'll abandon their second home, or move out of harm's way, low-income, black, brown communities. Those that suffer will most if we don't take decided actions to reduce emissions and the effects of climate change will be also be the least likely to access programs to assist after getting impacted by storms. So please, uh, adopt this rule, do more, do faster on stopping climate change and protecting those in harm's way.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, next speaker, Alan Hunt.
Hear me?
Yes, hi, Alan.
I'm Alan Hunt, Director of Policy for the Muskinetcon Watershed Association in Asbury, New Jersey. We were founded in nineteen ninety-two by local residents concerned about water quality. We advocate for protecting the watershed for people and nature and work through planning, education, advocacy, and stewardship. We thank the department for issuing these proposed inland flood protection rules. Sometimes it feels that so much attention is being placed on the shore after Sandy that inland waters like the Muskinetcon River, New Jersey's largest Delaware River tributary, are overlooked. I'm also a lifetime resident living on the banks of the Muskinetcon River on an outside bend to the river on our family's farm. And I can say that flooding is getting worse as I watch old fence posts placed generations ago wash into the river. I'm doing what I can to protect the river, working with NRCS, doing a stream bank restoration and buffer project. But a private landowner like me is unable to affect changes beyond my property. And we need the state and everyone to be working together to address flooding and prevent harm from it. Two years ago, Isaiah and Ida both flooded the Muskinetcon River above its banks. But for us, Hurricane Irene was our five-hundred-year storm event, and the high-water lines nearly exactly matched up with FEMA's five-hundred-year floodplain. Now, our watershed has low impervious coverage, ranging from two to twenty percent in each municipality. And while it's clear that stormwater contributes to flooding, the flood events are driven by increased rainfall, and stormwater management alone can't fix it. You know, we're still seeing major development proposals proceed in land use boards in the Highlands Council and DEP, even though we know water can reach these five-hundred-year floodplains. And if these projects proceed even now in this interim period before the rules are issued, that can exacerbate risk to people. They're not local issues, they're statewide, and our major nearest river, the Delaware, had historic flooding several times, oh, three, oh, four, oh, five, oh, six, eleven, twenty-eleven, twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-twenty-two. So we urge the department to proceed with these rules and adopt them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. All right, the next commenter would be Willa Inlander.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Willa Inlander. That's W I L L A I N L E N D E R. And I live at Carlisle Court in Princeton. I'm on the board of the Mercer County Defense League, which is a fledgling nonprofit that was established to champion open space and land preservation while identifying ecologically vulnerable areas in Mercer County. The application of projects such as Bridgepoint Eight LLC, which will decimate the largest contiguous wetlands in the Northeast with its seven warehouses, nine hundred and ten loading docks. and 5.5 million square feet, raising awareness of these types of developments that will cause catastrophic intanglements on our land, environment, community and commerce became our mission. Just a few years back, my son, who at the time was studying at NYU, was traveling home by train for a visit and he got trapped amidst other commuters at the Princeton Junction train station due to flooding. The tunnels at the train station were gushing with water that was far too deep to traverse through. That one was flooded. It was truly frightening. It was then that we realized again how dangerous and precarious things are in regions that are flood-prone like ours. Data shows that the erosion and contaminated stormwater will only worsen given the impacts of climate change. I am strongly in favor that the D P adopt the inland flood protection rules and to follow the precedent set by Byrne, Kane, Florio, Whitman by issuing a moratorium on every development application that has pending permits. The inland flood rules should be adopted by May 2023. They should have been enacted this past summer. All pending developers with applications need to be notified. Developers will make the adjustments so as to be in compliance. No permit should be given at this time unless the criterion as outlined in the inland flood rule is met. The D P and Governor Murphy must take action now. Stacy Fox briefly spoke from the heart and I-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but unfortunately, your two minutes is up.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next person would be Paul Jeffrey. Okay, the next individual is Margaret Jokas. Okay, next would be Libre Jones. Okay, and as I mentioned before, if anyone is trying to get on and they they're not being able to unmute quickly enough, then you can let us know and we'll make sure that you have an opportunity to speak. The next person would be Sonya Kalain Anidis. Next would be Melissa Kempf. Right, next would be Bill Kibler.
Afternoon Vince.
Hi Bill.
Bill Kibler, K I B L E R with Raritan Headwaters, Raritan Headwaters supports the rule. This is the, this is a really good step in the right direction to updating the science and protecting lives and property. We have more to do, but Vince, many thanks to you and your staff for this Herculean effort. Looking forward to seeing the rest of the rules ASAP. First thing is um DOT should not get special treatment under the rules. DOT is the single largest developer in this state. They control more impervious cover than anyone else. Um, they control and impact more stream miles than anyone else I'm familiar with when you consider, uh, when you include roadside uh drainage. So I have nothing against DOT, they have a job to do, but they also shouldn't get special treatment under this rules, under these rules. Uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about is there should, we definitely need a moratorium on approval of any projects until the rules are implemented. There should be absolutely no grandfathering. Um, you know, we're dealing in this state with flooding caused by overdevelopment and building that puts people and property in harm's way. For far too long, local communities and the people of the state of New Jersey have been forced to bear the burden and the costs of the flooding. Developers come in, they build their development, they sell it and they move out, leaving us to bear the costs. This rules a step towards requiring builders, those who profit from their development activities, bear some of the costs of the flooding or at least limit their development in flood-prone areas. It helps force developers to internalize the costs of their development instead of pushing those costs off on us or externalizing their costs. And economists would recognize this principle as internalizing externalities. Bottom line is that the developers who reap the profits from the development activities should bear the costs, not us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, next would be Wade Kirby. All right, next would be Peleg Kremer. All right, next would be Patricia Laguna. And the next person who signed up was Carrie Lloyd. Next would be Rachel Locken, Locken?
Locken, yes.
Locken, I apologize.
That's okay. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Rachel, R A C H E L, Locken, L O K K E N. And I'm an attorney at Fair Share Housing Center. New Jersey is in the midst of a housing crisis. As the availability of housing stock diminishes and rents and home prices continue to rise, our planning principles must align with statewide policy to safeguard affordability and to create more affordable housing opportunities for our residents. With the largest percentage of our existing affordable housing in the state being in flood hazard areas, climate gentrification of lower income and black and brown people in New Jersey is a real issue. And D P's proposed rules could play an important role in combating future climate gentrification. D P should center its policy decisions around a consciousness that considers housing insecurity and racial, ethnic and socioeconomic disparities in housing access so as to align with statewide policy for the provision of affordable housing, excuse me. It should thoroughly examine the impact of these rules on existing communities of color and lower income communities. As they stand, these rules may make it impossible for these communities to make their homes more resilient to climate change or to replace existing homes that are in harm's way, thereby essentially isolating these communities through restricted development instead of guiding development in a more climate resilient manner. Redevelopment is a critical tool for achieving community development goals and we want to ensure that it remains a viable strategy for the provision of affordable housing. However, until D P quantifies and calculates the geographic extent and impact of the proposed rules, we have no way of knowing the extent of the impact of a, on a future affordable housing development. We look forward to talking with the D P more broadly about the identification of affordable housing inventory potentially lost in the years to come due to climate change and how to create affordable housing with greater resilience to flooding in the near future. We will be submitting written comments and we thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today.
Thank you so much. Okay, next would be Mark Lucera. Okay, we can circle back. Um, if Mark is trying to get on, next would be Grant Lucking.
Hi Vince, Grant Lucking, that's G R A N T L U C K I N G for the New Jersey Builders Association, representing the residential housing industry in New Jersey. We appreciate the goal and intention of D P to create resiliency in the face of climate change. Um, but it's also crucial to D P consider the need for accuracy when making land use policy based on an 80-year time horizon. Uh, the figures for precipitation increases in this rule proposal are based on a single precipitation study that was not published for peer review in any academic journal. We retained a meteorologist to conduct a review of the study and based on his analysis, which we shared with D P, we continue to believe that utilizing the median range for precipitation and the 2050 time horizon with mandatory updates every 10 years would be a more prudent approach reflective of the large variances in the study's findings, constantly evolving climate science and the changing climate. Uh, we'd also urge D P to consider the short and long-term economic consequences of this rule proposal in relation to NJ's housing affordability crisis. Given that many in the public and even in the development community are unaware of how they will be affected or whether their property is at risk of flooding, D P should absolutely provide mapping in concert with updated flood studies to provide the public with this crucial information. It's also crucial applicants be provided additional legacy provisions to protect their investments, many of which include constitutionally mandated affordable housing based on already settled uh court cases. Without a delayed implementation date or additional legacy provisions in these cases, uh, the rules, rules leave countless projects in limbo. Um, many of the times, uh, for no other reason that they're in years-long permitting process or they're unable to get legacy provisions. Uh, accordingly, we urge the department to utilize the time of application standard, whether it be at the local or state level for both the stormwater and FHA portions of the rule. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to comment here today. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Grant. All right, the next person would be Jenny Ludmer. Okay, next is Julia Magosin. Next would be Lisa Marcus Levine. Okay, next would be Agnes Marsala. Next is Drew Martin.
We not have unmuted in time.
Oh.
Oh, wait, I'm Agnes Marsala, sorry.
Oh, hello.
Hi, can you hear, can I go?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay. Agnes Marsala, A G N E S M A R S A L A from Chesterfield, New Jersey. I'm the Vice President of Sable York.org and President of People Over Pipelines and a member of Empower New Jersey. In October of 2012, I was without power for eight days because of the damages brought on by super strong Sandy. A year earlier in August of 2011, Tropical Storm Irene caused flooding so severe, I had three feet of water in my cellar, knocking out my water heater and the water pump from my well. It also left my furnace in standing water so high and for so long, I needed to replace nearly all of the components before winter. Since then, major flooding from storms described with phrases like "once in a century" or "snow bomb," "mega flood," atmospheric rivers and "snow cyclones" have become the norm. I mean, you know, come on a minute already, we need to invent new vocabulary to describe the extreme weather caused by climate change. So we all agree this is an emergency, but I don't get any sense of that from this administration. Any pushback at all from developers is enough for the state to clutch its pearls and stop any-
You seem to have muted yourself, Agnes. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I didn't mute myself. I don't know how that happened. All right, well.
That's okay, we'll, we'll give you some extra time there.
Oh, okay. Um, we're faced with a literal, literal land grab for the last remaining farmland in Garden State in an attempt to be grandfathered in or legacy permitting. Should these rules ever be adopted? Developers like active acquisitions in Chesterfield are doing whatever they can to gain approvals to turn land zoned agricultural into, with wetlands and riparian zones into warehouses, rushing to jam their square peg into a round hole in an attempt to beat the D P's efforts to protect us against the ever-increasing threats of devastating floods. My fear is that even if these rules are passed in a timely manner, developers will simply find a way around them, maybe filling in the wetlands by two feet, thereby circumventing any maximum height limits imposed by municipalities.
Excuse me, I, I don't, I don't like to cut people off, but we gave you a few extra seconds past your two minutes. Please feel free to submit your comments.
Rules as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, um, was someone trying to speak in there but wasn't able to log on? I thought I heard another voice there. Okay, uh, next would be Drew Martin. Right, next is Catherine McCaffrey.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, um, thank you for um calling on me. I'm Catherine McCaffrey. That's M C C A F F R E Y. I'm a lifelong New Jersey resident and the Professor of Anthropology at Montclair State and the co-founder of a nonprofit, The United Tastes of America, that's, that builds belonging and integration for refugees and asylum seekers. I'm calling today to support the updated inland flood rules to protect lives. In September 2021, 35 of the resettled refugee families we work with were made homeless once again when Ida devastated the Oakwood Plaza Public Housing Complex in Elizabeth. Approximately 600 residents were displaced from this low-income complex and four individuals drowned when the Elizabeth River surged. Residents in first-floor apartments had to be pulled from holes cutting in their ceilings from upstairs apartment. The, the families were displaced and remain um unable to access their belongings and are face increasingly difficult searches for permanent housing. So even though Hurricane Ida is a, we consider it as a once-in-a-lifetime um event, it offers important lessons on the scale and speed of the environmental challenge we're facing. So I'm calling today to support updated rules to protect lives. Failure to implement strong flood rules will harm our communities and loved ones and the D P should follow the precedent set by Byrne, Kane and Florio um to protect the intended resources and issue a moratorium on applicable pending permits. We need to protect lives, we need to, to get up to date and we need to protect the low-income people that bear the brunt of our lack of decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, the next commenter is Charlie McCullough. Okay, next commenter is Alison McLeod.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Hi Alison, yes.
Hi, thanks. Uh, good afternoon, Alison McLeod, A L L I S O N, M C L E O D. I'm the Public Policy Director for the New Jersey League of Conservation Voters. Uh, we commend the Administration Department and the D P staff for their work on this critical and lifesaving rule. We remain extremely supportive of the rule update as a whole and strongly echo the department's justification in the summary for the need and importance of these rules. Um, we do have some brief verbal comments and we'll follow up with written comments on ways to make the rule even stronger and more protective. In the definitions, we suggest the department be extremely explicit in their language regarding what constitutes a public transportation agency, particularly as so many of the decisions in Section 12.6B hinge on that definition. If this is meant to be a codified process for state and federal transportation agencies, that should be stated explicitly as any ambiguity could only lead to more uh confusion. We also have some questions about the quote "strict compliance exceptions" proposed in Section Point 12.6B. Specifically regarding the five factors spelled out in that section, we would need a full explanation of the criteria and processes to make those determinations. During Hurricane Ida, many of the individuals who lost their lives were in their vehicles on roadways. So if we are making the decision to exempt a roadway from requirements, we must ensure that we are not therefore putting lives at risk. To that end, how are we defining excessive flood storage volume? What is a prohibitively high construction cost? Is there a point where construction costs frankly can't be the ultimate decision-maker if we know we are putting lives at risk? The department proposed road signage, but to be frank, we do not believe that will prevent people from using major roadways, whether in storm conditions or otherwise. Again, metrics of the flooding in Ida happened too quickly for people to make decisions about what routes were flood-prone, even if they knew that information in the first place. So we're requesting a full accounting of how these decisions are made, should be explicitly spelled out in the rules for full transparency and to hold ourselves accountable for prioritizing human health and safety as we make these decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alison. The next commenter who signed up is Sonya Mitchelluk.
I believe my sister was to go before me. She is Charlotte Mitchelluk. Um, we have put together a speech to discuss before, um, but I can go-
Either one of you can go, that's, that's, that's fine.
Could she go first?
Absolutely.
Hello, I am Charlotte Mitchelluk, M I C H L A L, uh, A L U K. I live in Titusville and I am a high school student. While there are clear economic and human health costs of flooding, I would like to discuss the ecological cost of flooding based on my- I would like to discuss the ecological cost of flooding based on my research and experience. For over a decade, my sister and I have been monitoring the health of waterways in Mercer County and have learned a great deal about the harmful effects of stormwater and flooding. It is vital to understand how detrimental excess flooding is to our ecosystems. We must take accountability for our policies and decisions. We can start by supporting and strengthening the inland flood protection rule. Stormwater and flooding are natural cycles. What has changed is the removal of wetlands and the creation of impervious surfaces. Wetlands serve as natural ways to mitigate flooding, acting as sponges which take in water and slowly release it, filtering it along the way. The creation of impervious surfaces disrupt natural water drainage and filtration. With an increase in impervious surfaces and development over wetlands, we need to be careful deciding where to build and what impacts we make on our environment. Half of the world's wetlands have been lost and New Jersey is now fifteen percent impervious surface. Stormwater flows over impervious surfaces such as roads, parking lots, and housing developments, gathering pollutants and flowing into nearby waterways. It carries heavy metals, fertilizers, plastic debris, sewage, bacteria, pesticides, and industrial waste right into our tap water sources, parks and recreational areas, and habitats for sensitive species. Nutrient pollution leads to harmful algal blooms and toxins in water, which pose a threat for wild and domestic animals. Bodies of water become eutrophic with a lack of dissolved oxygen and biodiversity plummets. These are all well-established occurrences and I have seen them personally. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Charlotte. Um, Sonya, if you'd like to add anything, you, you can also have, uh, two minutes. Okay, well, thank you so much. Uh, next would be, um, McGee Miggins. Okay, Sean Moen.
Good afternoon and hello from beautiful South Jersey. My name is Sean Moen, first name S E A N, last name M O H E N. I'm the Executive Director of Tri-County Sustainability. We are the regional hub for the one hundred and one towns, ten legislative districts, and one point two million residents of Burlington, Camden, and Gloucester Counties. As it's New Year, I just want to say a quick belated thanks to all DEP personnel for your work on behalf of all New Jerseians this last year and going forward. We absolutely support the inland flood protection rules update and request that the Murphy Administration and all state agencies move forward on implementation with great haste. With all the excellent points we've already heard today, the one group that story generally goes unnoticed is the plight of our public works employees. Trash collector is one of the most dangerous jobs in America. Climate change is making it worse. Every one of these fluvial flooding events makes it even worse for them. A week before Christmas, our region was hit with a massive rain event. The water was shin-deep in some areas. We, forgive the pun, were flooded with requests from our DPW superintendents asking us to let homeowners and businesses know know not to put their soaking-wet rugs and other furniture from flooded basements out with the trash. Their staff just couldn't handle hauling all the extra waterlogged weight. They're worried about people quitting and they're already short-staffed. This storm didn't even register as one of the top flood events to hit our state or region in recent years. Adding this anecdote to all the other events we've heard about today, again, we support the inland flood protection rules update and request the Murphy Administration and all state agencies move forward on implementation. Sans DOT exemption, great haste. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, do I see a note in the comments, um, for Sonya to pick up?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, let's go back to Sonya then. Welcome back.
Hello. My sister's computer's next one, okay. Sorry about that. Hello, my name is Sonia Mitcheluk, S O N J A, M I C H A L U K. Uh, I'm from Titusville and I'm a statistics and machine learning student at Carnegie Mellon University. I have dedicated many years to researching ways we can improve water data collection with higher statistical power and predict the results of infrastructure and land use on water quality. I have seen flooding in areas such as Jacobs Creek capable of washing out native riparian vegetation. These riparian buffers prevent stream bank erosion, filter, and catch water. Without them, stream banks are vulnerable to the spread of invasive plant species, such as lesser celandine, for example, whose propagation is aided by flooding. These species provide little value to the ecosystem as food sources for wildlife and compete with native plants. We are capable of mitigating flooding and subsequent ecological damage by leaving these riparian buffers intact and fortifying them with native plant species. Waterway bank erosion also leads to increases in turbidity. Sedimentation changes bottom morphology of waterways, limiting the organisms the habitat can sustain and resulting in loss of habitat for organisms at the bottom of the food web. These aquatic macroinvertebrates sustain ecosystems from the bottom up as a food source for amphibians, reptiles, fish, birds, and small mammals. Increased sediment in water has also been shown in many studies to harm macroinvertebrate species by having an effect on their abilities to respire and to feed. Without a strong, biologically diverse foundation, the rest of the food web will crumble. I appreciate our inland flood rules and believe they need to be made stronger to protect the health of ourselves, our natural resources, and our rich ecosystems. We have an opportunity today to put in place something that our children and our grandchildren will thank us for.
Thank you so much, Sonya. Okay, next, uh, would be John Mulcahy.
Mulcahy, yes. Uh, that's, uh, M U L C A H Y. I'm a lifelong New Jersey resident in the last twenty-four years in West Windsor. You know, flooding, uh, across New Jersey is real, as articulated by so many. I've seen the flooding of the pedestrian tunnel at New Jersey Transit Train Station on many occasions, flooding on Route One, flooding on local roads, flooding on the turnpike. Uh, in the aftermath of Ida, I was, uh, stuck with hundreds of other motorists, uh, overnight, ten to twelve hours, just sleeping in our cars, right? I was right in the center lane, just, uh, because the roads were, the turnpike was closed, it was flooded. Uh, it, it was, it was awful. Uh, tragically, you know, dozens lost their lives, many in cars, uh, during that storm. Uh, it should have served as yet another wake-up call. Uh, I think it's great that the NJDEP, uh, has proposed these inland flood protection rules. But it's important for all of us, you know, words and proposals are not enough. You know, we need the DEP, uh, to either apply these rules immediately to all pending applications, especially the largest projects that are going to have the most destructive impact, like Bridge Point Eight LLC, uh, in West Windsor. And if we can't apply these rules immediately, then we should put a moratorium on all pending applications until they're in place. Uh, it, it's, it's, we're going to live with developments of warehouses and other large structures for decades to come. Uh, it's worth taking, uh, just a little bit of extra time to make sure we get that development right. Uh, especially against the backdrop of our, uh, our politicians, elected officials. In my township, I'm embarrassed to say that the local officials, uh, ran through the Bridge Point Eight with, against the voice of the residents. Governor Murphy providing lip service, but, you know, not taking, uh, real. And.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but your two minutes is up, sir. If you could just wrap it up.
Uh, yeah, so I'll just say it's now more than ever important for institutions like NJDEP to stand strong when our politicians are not. And I would just like to echo all the recommendations and suggestions that Holly Cox rattled off earlier. Fully support all of those. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, next would be, uh, Neilofur Narindran, Narindran.
Yeah, hi, hi, everyone. I'm Nilofur. Narindran's my husband. I'm Nilofur Darbary. So that's D A R B A R Y. Thank you so much for having me. I, uh, nice to see John just before me. I am a West Windsor resident, uh, very concerned about one of the largest warehouses that are coming up right behind me in my backyard called the Bridge Point Eight, uh, uh, application. Uh, they have used outdated flood maps from nineteen ninety-nine. And like John said, we are very disappointed that our planning board actually approved the application based on those outdated flood maps. Uh, there was a rezoning of six hundred and fifty acres of land during COVID to allow for warehousing. Uh, we have seen, uh, I personally use, uh, one of the roadways that's just a mile away from this huge massive development that's being proposed. It runs via the Delaware Canal, and unfortunately, that route, that is one of my favorite routes to go to work or go to, go into Princeton, is a lot of times closed due to flooding. And I cannot imagine the catastrophic effects of allowing an application like Bridge Point Eight, which is the largest, uh, warehouse in New Jersey, project in New Jersey, to be allowed to go through with those outdated flood maps from nineteen ninety-nine. So I do urge you to look at the inland protection rules and consider applying them to pending applications. And like John said, hold the, is it a moratorium on pending applications until these rules are in effect? Uh, and strongly urge you to do so. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next would be Ray Nichols. Okay, Ray, if, uh, if you find, uh, find that you're trying to get on, just let us know. Um, next would be Joe O'Connell.
Hi, I'm Joe O'Connell. I live in Hillsborough, New Jersey. Um, can you hear me? Yes?
Yes, thank you, Joe.
Um, in this area, which is right adjacent to Manville, we've seen significant flooding, um, several times in the past years, uh, especially Hurricane Ida, but not limited to that. Um, the developers, right now, especially for the warehouses, have been coming in as fast as they can since these rules were first announced. And they're just trying to get in as quickly as they can, right under the wire, so that they're grandfathered in. I would please appreciate that there is no exception, no grandfathering, no exceptions at all for any of these. You need to sit back and, and have us be able to protect the land that we have without further, uh, problems. It's always harder to mop up the mess than it is to prevent it. It's always cheaper to prevent it than to mop up the mess afterwards. And I would encourage the DEP to get these things through with no exceptions. No, um, grandfathering, nothing like that at all, and to do that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next commenter would be Michelle Osseo. Okay, next would be Karen O'Connell. Okay, next would be Doug O'Malley.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Doug, hi.
Super. Uh, thank you, Vince. I, I want to, my, my name is Doug O'Malley, Director with Environment New Jersey. Uh, I wanted to thank, uh, the hard work of DEP staff to get these rules to the proposal stage. Uh, I, I also just want to acknowledge that, you know, these proposed rules are so desperately needed because we have heard countless painful stories just this afternoon from individuals that got stuck, uh, during Ida, uh, that were flooded during Ida. Obviously, we, we cannot hear from the, the families, uh, of, of residents who lost lives during Ida. There's a painful cost, but the reality is the next storm is around the corner and we have to be ready for it. And, uh, you know, that's why it's so critical that DEP adopts these rules as quickly as possible and move to ensure that all pending permits are paused until adoption, to ensure that developers don't play a game of beat the clock, uh, because of these new flooding protections. Honestly, uh, you know, we, we shouldn't have a game of locking in development that's vulnerable to flooding for generations because, uh, a particular builder was able to get a development approved right under the deadline. And this is where DEP really should follow that precedent, as we've heard from others, from Governor Byrne, Governor Kane, Governor Florio, and Governor Whitman, to issue the moratorium and applicable pending permits. I also just want to emphasize the incredulousness of having an exemption for our DOT in highways. We just heard from a testifier on the impacts of being stranded on the turnpike, right? And whether it's the turnpike or the parkway or local roads, uh, there, we, we, we know that to be safe during a storm and to get home, you have to be on a, a roadway if you're stuck out there. That's what happened to so many people during Ida. And that's why we have to ensure that when these rules are adopted, that the exemption for DOTs are moved. We encourage the department to adopt these rules as quickly as possible by April and to move towards the next challenge, which is our coastal, uh, flooding rules, which are obviously incredibly important as well. Thank you so much for these, for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, next would be Mayor Richard Undarko, Undarko.
Good afternoon, Vince, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, um, the borough, the borough of Manville is ground zero for the adverse effects of poor stormwater management practices over the past seventy-plus years as more and more impervious coverage was added to our watersheds. Climate change plays a part in contributing to our problems here. However, overdevelopment in upstream, upstream from Manville today is the real culprit, in my opinion. Can the rules address the amount of impervious cover that already exists in the watersheds? And if any more should be allowed? In the last five years, the overdevelopment around Manville has been troubling to witness. Without proper stormwater retention in these new developments today, it will only contribute to higher water levels in the borough of Manville. I support the moratorium passed, uh, proposed by the Watershed Institute to immediately be put in place to slow down the overdevelopment going on in New Jersey. We do not need more apartment complexes, more vehicles on our roadways, or more warehouses to only contribute to heating our atmosphere, which contributes to climate change and more intense storms. Take the bold action required, Governor Murphy. Help save New Jersey. These rules are absolutely required to stop overdevelopment in New Jersey. However, sadly, it may be too late. Thanks, Vince, and you're always welcome to visit my hometown.
Thank you, Mayor, will do. Thank you for your comments. Okay, next, uh, would be Margaret Ortiz. And the next commenter would be David Pavon. Okay, uh, the next person, and again, if, uh, if I'm, if someone's trying to log on and they don't get on in time, just let us know and we'll make sure that you're heard. Uh, the next person would be Chi Park. The next commenter is Priya Patel. Okay, next would be Mike Pizarro.
Good afternoon, Vince. Um, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Mike Pizarro. It's P I S A U R O, Esquire. I am the Policy Director for the Watershed Institute. I cannot thank DEP enough for these rules. I know it was a long road getting here, and that's part of the problem. It has been a long road getting here. We are already a year past when these rules should have been adopted, as well as the remainder of the real NJPAC rules. So there's a real emergency, in essence, and that's why we're calling for the moratorium, as you've heard multiple speakers talk. You know, and it's not, uh, you know, superstorms and five-hundred-year storms that causing the problem. If you looked at the news over, you know, the holidays, the, um, two and a half or less rainstorm in Bergen County resulted in significant flooding and cars being stuck in ice in a, uh, hotel parking lot. You know, these rules are so necessary. And that's why we cannot wait any longer, and that's why we cannot afford further grandfathering. You know, from what I've understood, there has been a flood of applications after DEP, you know, announced the emergency rule, and I suspect we are going to have a flood of applications. And the way we work with the grandfathering rules, um, technically complete applications come in, even though they're not really technically complete, so we can't afford that. Um, if you take a look at the governor's, uh, Kane's executive order in one seventy-five, you can almost verbatim take that and turn it into a moratorium for these rules. And I think the governor should do that. You know, some people will say it's not, you know, increasing rain, but it's old infrastructure. While I'm sure that is a contributor, it's more than that. It's increasing volumes. It's tailwater pressure because all these systems drain into a stream that can't handle it, and we need it. Uh, so we urge the department to get these rules adopted as fast as humanly and procedurally possible. We cannot wait for the rest of the real rules. Those need to be proposed today, and we need to stop dealing with applications until these are in place. place unless the applicant complies with the new standards. So again, thank you, and we'll be spitting more thorough written comments.
Thank you, Mike. Next commenter is Nancy Pivuar.
Very good, Vincent. I appreciate that. Good. My name is Nancy Pivuar. I'm a resident of Plainfield, longtime resident of New Jersey, local citizen. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I also appreciate all the people who put this package together. But how does this impact the ordinary citizen who wants to live in harmony with the environment where we live? Nowhere in this document is the word education or the word overdevelopment. Common sense must prevail. There needs to be more education about the impact of dumping in the waterways. The word floodway is used a lot in this proposed ruling, but the floodways where I live get clogged with debris, trees, and garbage, which exasperate the flooding problem. The city of Plainfield has gotten no recognition for their mitigation efforts that started over 100 years ago, when they set off and purchased land for flood plains. Greenbrook Park, Cedar Brook Park, and Mill Campbell Field are examples. Not that these flood plains have solved the problem, but can anyone imagine the damage if the city of Plainfield had allowed development in those areas? Out of control development has exasperated the flooding problem, and I agree with the mayor of Manville, that has been around for hundreds of years. DEP and municipality needs to be more discerning in allowing permits in sensitive areas. I still not know how a builder was able to build two houses after the 1973 Greenbrook flood along the banks of the Brook in North Plainfield. If the water course courses were free, as free as they should be, there would be no damage from flood. That's a quote from a 1927 editorial in the Courier News. And that is what I would like to address. The floodwaters, floodways get clogged, and members of the public or responsible citizens need to know to whom to call to get the streams, brooks, and creeks unclogged. Signs need to be posted with telephone numbers and our websites in order for ordinary citizens to call. The people have the responsibility to address the clogged waterways. Right now, there are two trees blocking the Greenbrook and the Stonybrook, and I have gotten no response to try to get these trees removed. And nowhere in this proposed ruling other words, quote, enforcement and fines. These rules can be proposed, but if there is no law without law enforcement, what good are the rules? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nancy. Okay, the next commenter is David Pringle. Dave?
Can you hear me?
Oh, there we go. Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. I'm multitasking here as we wait for in a three-hour hearing. So just let me pull my stuff together here. Good to see you, Vince, and everybody at DEP. Thank you for working on this rule. My name is David Pringle. I'm representing Empower New Jersey and Clean Water Action. I live in Cranford on the Royway River. I've lived there my entire 56 years. We've had two extreme floods in the last 10 years. Irene and Ira got water in my basement on the river. I love it. I chose the house because it's on the river. It's up on a significant bluff that we normally don't get water. And my house has been there for 95 years, and it's flooded twice, both times in the last 10 years. That's due to overdevelopment and climate change. Whether it's more one, more the other, for the purposes of this rule, it doesn't matter. We need stronger flood protections, and this rule does that. So we support it. It needs to be stronger, and it needs to be ASAP, certainly by May. The, in strengthening it, we have to remove the exemption for DOT in the highways and roads. They should be held to the same standards as everybody else. As Mr. Kipper said, they don't deserve special treatment. The largest developer, and we're selling ourselves short if we do that. A majority of deaths occurred from Ida, 30 people in New Jersey, because of flooded-out cars. That's because of roads. Doesn't mean we can solve every problem everywhere, but we have to do a lot of better than we do now. And this rule doesn't do enough better when it comes to roads. We need to follow the precedents of Governors Byrne, Kane, Florio, and Whitman. When they wanted to protect stuff, and they did so by stronger rules, they issued moratorium on applicable pending permits to make sure that those resources were protected. Two Republicans, two Democrats. Where's Governor Murphy? He needs to do it. We know how permit extensions happen. Sydney, we have, I think, eight permit extensions the last 20 years. Another recession's coming. It's critical. We stop the bad projects and make even the good projects better, given the realities of climate change and the science that Vince and others have led so well. Oh, am I out of time? Let me just, let me make, just close out with one sentence. Weak flood protections on upstream unfairly and disproportionately impact already overburned communities downstream, from increased flooding to raw sewage from combined sewer overflows. While this rule begins to fix that, it has to be strengthened and expedited, as do the long promised and increasingly dated additional rules. DEP, you were ordered by Governor Murphy three years ago to do over a dozen rules. Only three of them for climate, only three of them have been adopted. Some have been weakened or gotten, and the vast majority of the rest are delayed. We know you have an impossible task. We know you're not making all the calls, but you have to do more, faster, better, and the governor needs to back you up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. All right, next would be Mary Agnes Procaccino.
Sorry about that. I'm so quick. I probably should have done that.
Okay, next person would be Jean Pubali. All right, next commenter is Leon Pulsonel. Next commenter is Elizabeth Pishnick. Okay, next commenter is Yanet Ramirez.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Yanet Ramirez, Y-A-N-E-T-T Ramirez, R-A-M-I-R-E-Z. I am a Newark resident. I want to thank the workers of the DEP for this ruling. I am here to second many of the points already stated before me by the environmental justice folks that I remember before. I support the rule, which is actually stronger. Floods affect me personally because on the street of where I live, I live in Ironbound. I think about people who have kids and who are elderly residents who pass by this area. Each time there's heavy rain, heavy rain affects us, even, even if, you know, tomorrow's gonna rain like for 10 hours, I believe. And I expect to see some overflow around here. We already are in an overburdened community, so the strengthening of this rule will only help this demographic. I support the following suggestions to this rule. Increase the funding to Blue Acres and push for fair buyouts. Remove the exemption for DOT highways. Highly urge to expand the regulated floodplain to include all the 500-year floodplain to calculate the flood hazard area based on the future rainfall, knowing the destruction from the climate crisis. A moratorium on new construction, elevator structures of any kind, no grandfathering. To be specific, the rationale of building just to build doesn't take into account the current community that already lives there, which bears the burden of their actions. It only makes sense to approve new building plans if you're focusing solely on the profit of the few. We need to use research that will help our community for future generations, not just the few corporations that want short-term profit. I support this rule, and it should be stronger to protect our communities and the ecological population. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next commenter would be Anjuli Ramos Busso.
Hi, Vince, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good afternoon. My name is Anjuli Ramos. That's A-N-J-U-L-I-R-A-M-O-S. I'm the New Jersey Director for the Sierra Club. I'm speaking today on behalf of over 80,000 members and supporters in New Jersey. New Jersey DEP, thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and of course, thank you for all your hard work on this rule. The New Jersey Sierra Club will be providing technical comments in addition to our testimony today. First, I would like to say that this rule needs to be adopted as soon as possible, like our lives depend on it, because they actually do. Too many New Jerseians have lost their lives due to severe flooding in our state, and that is because of the impacts of climate change, but most importantly, because of the way we build today and our infrastructure are outdated. Flooding patterns and flood zones have been changing for decades now. This didn't just happen from one day to another. And updating how we integrate these variables in our infrastructure needed to happen a long time ago. Thus, why this rule needs to urgently be adopted in the strongest way possible. This gets to my second point, which many folks and organizations have mentioned already, and that is the DOT and highway exemptions. We're all aware of many people that have lost their lives on roadways due to severe flooding. It is irresponsible to exempt DOT projects from this rule. Doing this does not protect the public. No matter how much it costs, no project from the DOT should be exempt because in reality, what is the monetary value of a life? We all know the answer to that. There should never be a compromise in order to protect lives, especially as severe weather will continue to intensify in terms of strength and occurrence. The main questions we should ask ourselves are how are we building for the future 50 years from today, and will these exemptions be protective in those 50 years to come? We need to build for the distant future, not five years from now. Therefore, in addition to no exemptions, all new infrastructure, even if currently pending in the permitting stage, should be subject to this rulemaking, as we already have the information, and we know we need to be more protective. To close, New Jersey DEP, please adopt the strongest possible inland flood rule as quickly as possible, and propose the much-needed coastal wetland and stormwater rules now. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Next commenter, John Reichman. Okay, next person would be Byron Riggins.
John is here. You're missing John. John is here to speak.
I'm here.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Yes, Mr. Reichman.
Yeah, thank you. My name is John Richman. I'm on the Steering Committee of Empower New Jersey. I'm also the Environment Chair of Blue Wave New Jersey. DEP has accurately identified the existential threats from flooding, but unfortunately, it's pulled its punches in its proposed rules. Because I only have two minutes, I will focus on one egregious shortcoming, that the rules exclude transportation projects. Our entire economy, of course, depends on our road and rail infrastructure. Most of the deaths from Ida came from people drowning in their cars. The preamble to the rules repeatedly recognize the needs for our roads to withstand flooding caused by climate change. Yet inexplicably, the rules exclude transportation projects. This is like adopting gun control regulations but excluding assault weapons. So what does this mean as a practical matter? Take, for example, the highway expansion plans of the New Jersey Turnpike Authority. They are planning to spend tens of billion dollars on new highways, including 10.7 billion, to expand the Turnpike spur from north through Jersey City along waterways that are subject to substantial flooding. Yet DEP is saying that the rules will not apply to this project or any other multi-billion dollar projects. This is unfortunately one more example where DEP is simply giving the highway lobby a free pass when it comes to climate change and the impacts of climate change. It's taking no meaningful action to reduce greenhouse gases in the transportation sector, despite this being its transportation sector causing more than 40% of the emissions in the state. Please, no special exceptions for transportation projects. If anything, they should be stronger than the, than the rules needed for other projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, John. Okay, I'm not sure if Byron Riggins was on and was trying to speak.
Yeah, Vincent, can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate everybody for their time today. My name is Byron Riggins. I'm the Restoration and Advocacy Coordinator at the Delaware Riverkeeper Network. I have a Bachelor of Science in Marine Biology from University of Delaware, and a Master of Science in Interdisciplinary Marine and Esturomine Sciences from San Francisco State University. I want to say NJDP has taken an encouraging first step in safeguarding the lives and property of its citizens by making crucial revisions to the inland flood protection rules. Although these revisions are an improvement, they still considerably underestimate the impact of future pressures of larger storms and associated flooding, and are inadequate to protect citizens against the dangers to come. We know climate change will undoubtedly increase the intensity and frequency of extreme precipitation events, meaning New Jersey will have to brave many storms even more devastating than Ida, which resulted in the loss of 30 lives. NJDP has chosen to use hazard area design elevations that are at most three feet above FEMA's 100-year flood elevations. Flooding during Ida was on average 3.1 feet above the 100-year flooding elevation in New Jersey, meaning extreme storms of the, of the future could regularly pass this threshold. The revised rules also speak of allowing certain development activities that were previously permitted. NJDP must not allow development in the 100-year floodplain, and would better protect citizens by excluding development in the designated 500-year floodplain. In addition to excluding development, we must reforest in flood-prone areas that protect wetlands. Wetlands absorb stormwater and prevent floods. NORIN at all 2017 projected that the presence of tidal wetlands in the Northeast United States avoided $625 million in flood damage from hurricane Sandy. Reduce marsh and forest floodplain cover, which are nurseries for some commercial fish, could directly threaten the region's economic vitality. If you need further warning about what's to lose by overdeveloping floodplains, just look at California and what's happening right now. 90% of that state is under floodwatch as of Monday, and California is extremely vulnerable to flooding as a result of widespread development, drought, and flooding that has greatly deforested their floodplains. FEMA and NOAA highlight that.
I apologize. Excuse, excuse me, Mr. Riggins, but your two minutes is unfortunately up.
Okay, thank you. Please adopt these rules as quickly as possible and make sure to strengthen them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next commenter is Catherine Riss.
I'm Catherine Riss. I live along the banks of the Raritan River on River Road in Biscataway. I represent about 500 of my constituents here in these three apartment complexes. We were all impacted by Hurricanes Floyd, Irene, and Ida. Frankly, I think what you folks need to understand is that this is really past being urgent. I agree with all the comments that Ms. Ramirez and Ms. Ramos have made and others. What you need to understand is that we have wasted decades because of fossil fuel industry, the lies about climate change, and the dragging of feet on the, on the part of government, and we just cannot afford it because people are going to die. People are going to die. There will be me and my neighbors, and I don't want that to happen, okay? So please, you have to think ahead. Don't think about what happened in the last five years or even the last 10, although we've had 300-year floods in the last 33 years I've lived in this area. You have to think ahead. What is the increase in rainfall that we can anticipate will happen? We need to plan for that now, which means you cannot have any grandfathering. You cannot have any compromises with the fossil fuel and transportation industry, or all the lobbyists that are telling you, oh, no, this is going to be too expensive. If you value the lives of your constituents, please make sure that there's no further development or rebuilding in these floodplain zones. And that goes up to the 500-year because you can count on it sometime in your lifetime, maybe not mine, but in your lifetime, there will be a 500-year flood. And you don't want to be responsible for the people who will suffer and die as a result of that if you fail to take action. So I'm just saying to you, please, hear what we are saying. Our lives are at stake, and you must act, and you must act now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next commenter is Jerry Rivers. Okay, next would be Jane Wrong. Next commenter is Judith Rosenthal. Okay, next listed.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Okay. R-O-S-E-N-T-H-A-L. I am a member of the Coalition to Save the South Mountain Reservation, a third-generation Milburnite. Milburn lives, Milburn is located at the foot of the South Mountain Reservation. It lies between the Royway River, Woodbridge Creek, and Upper Passaic River Watersheds. I am living in a building on Main Street in Milburn. My family has owned it since the 1940s. There was never any flooding in this building until first Sandy and next Ida. I personally suffered the loss of only $13,000 in property damage. I say that, I say only because there are people in this town who lost their I say that, I say only because there are people in this town who lost their homes. So my loss was negligible. I fully support the rules and the comments of Stacy Fox and others. The people who object to these proposed rules all have a personal financial interest. And I believe that the D E P should discredit their testimony because of their personal financial interest in grandfathering or reducing the impact of these rules. I want to speak about an issue that no one has mentioned. My fear is that in adopting these rules, they will not be applied evenly to county and municipal governments. I think that the D E P has long allowed development within the South Mountain Reservation within the flood plains. This includes a building of McLune's Boathouse and the associated parking lots, overflow parking lots for the Turtleback Zoo. In 2007, it allowed expansion into the reservation for an outdoor dining pavilion and exhibits for eagle, bobcats, and other animals. In 2008, without any D E P oversight, it expanded the zoo to include a carousel, an aviary, and a picnic area. In 2009, a given exhibit. In 2010, a safari mini golf and treetop adventure ropes course. In 2011-
Excuse me, Ms. Rosenthal. I'm sorry to interrupt, but your two minutes is unfortunately up.
Okay, I'm just asking you that you exercise some oversight of county and municipal governments. They do not have the public interest at heart. I attended at least four meeting meetings at which the public spoke out against development of the South Mountain Reservation, which acts as a sponge for Milburn, and the county ignored every single one of us. Please exercise oversight of county municipal governments as well as private contractors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next commenter would be Anne Ryan.
Hi, I'm here.
Yes.
My name is Anne Ryan, A-N-N-E-R-Y-A-N. I'm here. I am in support of your efforts to pass the strictest inland flood protection rules. I'm here to speak as a flood victim. I happen to live in a 100-year flood plain for the last 30 years, and we were impacted three times. In 1999 with Floyd, 2011 with Hurricane Irene, and also last year with Hurricane Ida. Our family has sustained cumulatively about $300,000 in damages to our home. I don't know if this is really the place where I would be asking this, but in addition to supporting these rules, I would love to see more work done to help improve methods for homeowners to apply for grants to make changes to their house, not just the Blue Acres program, but for those of us who live in communities that are vibrant and beautiful communities that, in my case, 1999 till now, three floods. We would very much like to elevate our home. I've applied three times, twice declined. And in the last application that we put in after Hurricane Ida, we still don't have any answers. There's a lot of issues with respect to how we get the money. If we are granted that opportunity to elevate our homes, I can get into that further. I can send information. I'm not sure if this is really the place to do it, but many of us would like very much to be able to stay in our homes, and we would like to be protected from any further development that would negatively affect our homes and increase flooding issues for us. I thank you very much for the opportunity to let you hear from the voice of people who are affected by the flooding. It's very devastating. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. All right, the next commenter listed would be Elliot Ruga.
Good afternoon, Vince. My name is Elliot Ruga. I'm the Policy and Communications Director of the New Jersey Highlands Coalition. Changes are necessary to align stormwater BMPs and flood hazard area design elevations to the changes in precipitation found in the short-duration, high-intensity storms and the increased frequency of the 100-year storm and 500-year flood elevation due to climate change. We appreciate that the department has amended these rule provisions, but you have not gone far enough. The changes are well-supported by the cited best available science. However, the same science also indicates the need for even higher-designed flood elevations. The department has an obligation through its legislated authority to regulate land use to ensure what and where we build are in safe locations, not where there is a foreseeable risk of flooding. This is a responsibility that you should not be shy but aggressive in promulgating and implementing. The rules as proposed will still allow development in the flood plain, particularly in its grandfathering provisions. The necessity to implement these rules in response to already changed conditions would require more swift action, which is why there should be an immediate emergency adoption of the rule proposals or a moratorium on any new construction in an expanded flood plain. We understand the difficulty in requiring public transportation agencies to comply with expanded stormwater BMP requirements because they do not necessarily have control over the adjacent properties. However, the answer is not to merely give them an exemption because the loss of mitigating BMP creates stormwater volumes that impact the rest of us. There must be other solutions that do not simply pass the risk on to others. This is a summary of our concerns. We'll be submitting more specific and comprehensive written comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Elliot. Next commenter is Tammy Sands. And the next commenter is Albert Santelli. All right, the next commenter is Paul Sowers.
Vince, maybe now would be a good time to take our break. What do you think?
Yeah, let's do that.
No.
No, can I go? I mean, I've been off for three hours. I've been dealing with a sick wife.
Unfortunately, we do have to take a brief break so that anybody can use the facilities.
You know, I asked earlier, you know, if I could do it. I mean, I've been dealing with somebody who, you know, got dementia, and this is not like fair. I'm T. I'm like, you know, a couple of names away, and it's, you know, it's not right.
And we had- Vincent, I'll leave it up to you what you'd like to do.
Let's hear from Jeff, and then we'll take a break.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry. And I wanted to start out with that because what happened, Jeff Tittle, I've been involved with flooding issues since 1974. You name the watershed in New Jersey, I've been involved. And I just wanted to talk briefly about Ida. We could not get home because all the roads are flooded. We had to try to go to a hotel. My wife fell. All the roads between New Hope and Doylestown and Flemington, the two regional hospitals, were impassable. They had to take her down riverbeds to get her down to Langhorne because she separated her shoulder. This is what the consequences of bad and failed public policies are about. These rules may be a step in the right direction, but they do not go far enough. A 100-year flood plus 25% is still based on 100-year flood model, which does not work. Minimally, we should be looking at a 500-year flood. We've had three 500-year floods in this century so far, and one in 99 with Floyd. Things are getting worse. Things are getting deeper. Things are getting, you know, because of overdevelopment, even worse. This rule does not look at land use, which is a really important part of your modeling. As we cut down our trees and we cut down and pave our farm fields, it sends more stormwater down, and that needs to be taken into consideration. The flood of 1955 would be a lot worse now based on all the upstream development. And so when a watershed is at 30% impervious, you're going to have one model. At 50%, you should have another because of all the loss of that. Other important thing for people to understand, this rule does not stop development. It just means you have to go two feet higher. That means we're just going to be building higher houseboats for people. We need to be able to say no. There has to be areas that should be off limits because they're in such bad areas when it comes to flooding. Down the street from me in Lambertville, they just built three new homes, and that's why we should have a moratorium like burned-in on Pine Lands. Those houses have double basements because it's in a flood zone. Makes absolutely no sense. As far as New Jersey DOT is concerned, if they get to build at this level now, 20 years from now, we're going to have to spend billions of dollars raising those sites. We've already got $2 billion in this year's DOT budget to raise things. And my final and last point is we have to have a comprehensive plan. We have to get rid of the Christie rollbacks on the flood rules and other rules. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much. Okay, I know that there are a number of commenters that have been waiting patiently, and I apologize, the process is long, but we will be here to make sure that everyone can speak. I think a short break right now would be healthy for us. It is 3:02. I'm going to suggest that we come back at 3:10, and we'll pick up right where we left off. All right. Thank you for your patience, everyone. See you at 3:10. Okay, my clock reads 3:10. So in an effort to be, can you not hear me?
No, I can hear you, Vince. Your video quality is a little low.
Oh, that's interesting. Maybe it's just the way I look.
And I just want to let you guys know, Tina, I'm here. So whenever you want to go on the record, just let me know, okay?
Okay, great. Yep, we can pick back up on the record. Thank you.
Okey-dokey.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you again, everyone, for your patience. I believe the last person that we called was Paul Sowers. And I'm not sure if Paul had an opportunity to speak or not. Okay, next on the list would be Peter Schofield. And the next commenter would be Niata Shah.
Here.
Hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Niati Shah. Do you need me to spell it?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Okay, first name N-I-Y-A-T-I, last name S-H-A-H.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Hillsborough, New Jersey, and overall a resident of New Jersey since, for the past 30 years. I'm here to say that I'm in support of the new DEP rules for stormwater management. They can't come soon enough. These 100-year storms are happening more frequently, the most recent being over the holidays, where you saw the eight-, nine-foot flooding happening in South Jersey. We can't ignore these weather patterns and we can't rely on patterns from 1999. We need to look at these, these recent storms as this is what is going to be happening from here on out. These are gonna be yearly events, maybe twice a year. And depending on how responsibly we build and develop our communities, they could happen even more frequently. So I'd like to say that the DEP needs to put these regulations out as quickly as possible. And they need to be applicable to all new applications, all current applications being considered. Some of these applications are gigantic developments, gigantic warehouses, gigantic homes and communities that are being built. And while I'm in support of, you know, businesses thriving and people having places to stay, we can't build in places that are ultimately going to cause harm to the very people occupying those structures and the people who live in the surrounding neighborhoods. So, please adopt these resolutions, these regulations, and have them, have them, have them become law.
Thank you so much for your comments. Okay, next commenter is Lindsay Segmond.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you to the department for holding this hearing on the proposed inland flood protection rules. My name is Lindsay Segmond, L-I-N-D-S-E-Y-S-I-G-M-U-N-D, representing New Jersey future. We are in strong support of the rule changes and support the shift toward requiring the use of updated precipitation models to design our homes, roadways, stormwater management systems, and other critical infrastructure. For the stormwater management rules, we strongly support requiring the use of precipitation change factors to design stormwater infrastructure. One potential area of concern, as others have shared, is the unintended consequences of scaling up stormwater management requirements. We're concerned about the potential for gray infrastructure taking prominence over green to meet the expanded requirements. For the flood hazard rules, we strongly support the proposed DFE that raises riverine elevation mapped by DEP by two feet. These proposed amendments will also result in an increase in the land area of New Jersey that's subject to the requirements of the rules. It would be useful to know the plan of action around mapping these newly defined areas of risk, especially for projects that will utilize method six and calculate their own flood elevations. The department is proposing a new defined term, public transportation entity for both rural areas, and provides several exceptions for their projects. We'd like to better understand the implications and, as others have shared, the criteria of the expect, of the exceptions and how the department is defining planning milestones, benefits of compliance, to name a few. I think the department should also address as soon as possible what entities are included in that definition. I think there's a bit of confusion that it's just DOT, but we're understanding that it also includes municipal and county projects as well. Accepting public roadways from the new requirements does not address the level of risk currently facing our roadways and accompanying infrastructure. For example, raising homes and leaving surrounded public roadways at risk does not ensure the safety of New Jerseians. Overall, we're in strong support of the proposed changes to the rules to incorporate the latest climate science. So thank you for your consideration. We will be submitting detailed written comments in February. Thanks again.
Thank you, Lindsay. The next commenter is Zenovia Spazakis. Okay, the next commenter is Fred Stein.
My name's Fred Stein. I'm the Community Action Coordinator for the Delaware Riverkeeper Network. DRN supports the inland flood protection rules and urges DEP and the governor to adopt them as soon as possible. Every week, from our work with Riverkeeper, every week, land use boards throughout the state are approving development projects in areas that new GIS mapping and new science shows us will be susceptible to flooding, if not to being underwater. Many of those development projects put the new unsuspected residents in harm's way by building in currently designated floodplains. New homeowners that thought they were buying a piece of the American dream soon realized they'd purchased more of a nightmare than a dream. While there are certainly some members of those land use boards that think development first, many others are responsibly reviewing those site plans to make sure that they aren't putting people in harm's way, that they aren't creating headaches for the next generation of planners and regulators and the communities. Those board members, those land use board members are looking to DEP for stronger regulations to help them accomplish their goal of protecting their communities and doing smart land use planning. The inland rules revisions will help them, will help those land use plan, planners, land use boards, I mean. DRN works with residents and community groups in many older suburban and urban areas. Many of those communities get flooded so frequently that some residents actually have sandbags lining up alongside their homes for, so that they can quickly deploy and build this flood prevention wall in front of their basements and garages. Again, the new inland rules won't fix everyone's nightmares or stop every basement from flooding, but it is a step in the right direction. Delaware Riverkeeper Network urges DEP to adopt these rules as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Fred. Okay, next commenter is Jody Stewart.
Hi, thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Jody Stewart, S-T-E-W-A-R-T. I am a Superstorm Sandy survivor and the senior organizer with New Jersey Organizing Project, an organization that was created out of the floodwaters of Superstorm Sandy. I will make it brief and will not go by my script that I've written, because so many things have already been stated. But I do have one thing. My main concern is raising two feet above base flood level that our communities have already set. In 2015, I finally recovered and got home from Superstorm Sandy. And at that time, it cost me $220,000 to repair my home, $60,000 just to elevate. Well, I was fortunate. I've been in the building trade in most of my life. My husband is now retired. And I went out and got another estimate from another builder, what it would cost today to raise a 1,300-square-foot home like mine. That price would go up $60,000 if we changed any flood elevations. The truth be known, I'm at eight-and-a-half feet on my BFE. If it gets that high, I shouldn't be where I am. I just have to state that we really would like to see that set, because the truth be known, I would not have been able to get home if the prices were any higher. I went into debt to stay in my tiny home. I love my community. I love my friends and my neighbors. And I want to make sure the people in the future have that opportunity. Though we stand by most of the other rules that you have and are proud to stand by our allies from fair share housing and ironbound, we just want to make sure people in these communities have the opportunity to stay there and not to put added expense on them and help them mitigate so they can continue to stay there and not be part of the problem. So I thank you for these few minutes, and you have a great day.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next commenter is Vivica Sulich.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Vivica Sulich, V-I-V-E-C-A, Sulich, S-U-L-I-C-H. I have been a resident of the Green Hills Development in Hillsborough, New Jersey for approximately 30 years now. When we first moved in, there was no flooding whatsoever. But as more building went up along 206 and as 206 widened, more and more flooding has occurred, especially with superstorm events such as Hurricane Floyd, Tropical Storm Irene, Superstorm Sandy, and Hurricane Ida, which each, with each of those events, there have been neighbors who had to be evacuated from their homes because the water level went up to the second and third levels of their homes. The flooding has become worse with, with each subsequent storm. With Ida, many homes that never flooded before were flooding. The street that I live in, live on, rather, the street itself became like a river. With any major rain event, not these superstorms, the crossroad, the main road by our development, becomes flooded and we are basically trapped in our neighborhood. So my question is, if there's an emergency, how are emergency vehicles going to reach anyone in need? The other thing is there are two applications that you heard from, from Kristi Garcia, and both are being overturned. The second is for a warehouse on Harvard Way, and they are in the process of suing Hillsborough because they deny the application. So I urgently ask you to issue an immediate moratorium on pending permits and that there should be no grandfather clauses at all, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next commenter is, excuse me, is Andrew Tendler.
Thank you. Andrew Tendler with Premier Development and Affiliates. The planning for future development to protect people and property with greater factors of safety is appropriate in New Jersey. However, in the proposed rules, we believe there's a lack of fairness in how projects are grandfathered based upon whether they are being built inside or outside of the FHA verification line. The current proposals actually work to disincentivize those that would take extraordinary measures and expense to design outside of the FHA verification line. One grandfathering provision protects projects encroaching upon the floodplain line at the time of submission to DEP without receipt of the permit. The other grandfathering provision protects projects being built outside of the floodplain and which do not require a DEP permit, but only if all federal, state, and local approvals are received and construction is commenced prior to the rule change. This seems patently unfair. It sets a bad precedent, has the effect of penalizing property owners that respect the FHA verification line by purposely not designing within the floodplain, while unfairly rewarding or making it at least less burdensome for those that have done so and require a permit from DEP. It's reasonable that the grandfathering provisions should be on a par with one another. Projects not encroaching upon the verification line nor requiring a DEP permit should be protected similarly to other applications for approvals under the long-held time of application rule, NJSA 40:55D-10.5. This would be in the same way as those requiring DEP permission are protected when they are submitted. This provides clarity, fairness, and reliability such that a property owner can invest significant capital in a project, knowing that the rules will not change thereafter. It also provides clarity and direction to local municipalities when applying a standard overview for pending development applications. As you know, we've had a, an affordable housing crisis in New Jersey for years. Attention to the fair implementation of grandfathering can help support current inclusive developments being planned outside of the FHA verification line. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. All right, next commenter is Jagisha Fakur. Okay, next commenter listed is Barbara Torna. And the next commenter is Peter Tovar. The next listed is Harrison Yule.
Hello, this is Harrison.
Hello, Harrison.
My first name is Harrison, last name is U-H-L. I'm a longtime resident of Port Mercer, which is along the Delaware and Rar, Delaware and Raritan Canal at the divide between the Delaware River Basin and the Raritan River Basin. From here, left unimpeded, water can flow downhill in either or both directions. I live on the southerly side of the canal, and across the canal is the Port Mercer levee system, which is part, which in part separates the floodplain of Stony Brook from the canal. We flooded four times in the last 50 years, Doria in '71, Floyd in '99, Irene in 2011, and Ida in 2021. On each of these flood occasions, the levees breached. However, for Sandy, we did not flood. The levees held. The floodwaters, the hurricanes are an act of God. The levee breaches are an engineering failure. I bring this up because I believe the failure of our local flood control structures is just a canary in the coal mine. As the storms worsen, I doubt that ours is the only local levee at risk and other flood control structures. Simply raising the base flood elevations does not raise the structural capacities of the older flood control structures. The proposed rules does not address this follow-on threat and thereby provide the false sense of security. Hence the need to consider these failures at Port Mercer as a canary event. Most important about the levee failure is that it's provided a major stress test for Port Mercer and our neighbors downstream along the canal in both directions. When the levees failed, about 500 acre feet of water entered the canal in just a few minutes. This is way beyond the upstream 500-year event. At this rate of discharge, the surge would have been identified as several thousand-year storm or greater. Port Mercer got off easy as its multi-thousand-year surge came up several feet short of the present FEMA base flood elevation. However, our neighbors at Baker's Basin, where Route 1 crosses the canal to 295 overpass, and our neighbors where the Millstone meets Carnegie Lake, did not get off.
Excuse me, sir. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the two minutes is up.
Great measure, needs more details. The raised base flood elevation is going to leave, lead to distortions in the modeling and perception that people are safer than the, the rule make by themselves. Thank you very much. Bye.
All right, thank you very much. We're gonna go back. I skipped over Mr. Brian Tarantino.
My name is Brian Tarantino, T-A-R-A-N-T-I-N-O, and I represent a Hillsborough, New Jersey, community group called SWAT, Stop Warehouses and Trucks. SWAT is a nonpartisan group opposing seven gigantic warehouses in a five-square-mile section of our township. These seven warehouses total over 1.1 million square feet and increased impervious coverage by more than 2 million square feet. All of the proposed locations experienced catastrophic flooding during the 2021 Hurricane Ida event. One of the fatalities in the region occurred downstream of where the two largest warehouses are being proposed on Homestead Road. That development would increase impervious cover by 1 million square feet just upstream of Elmwood Road, where the drowning occurred. It is hard to imagine a worse location for a high-cover project. And yet, the developer maintains that they meet all the current stormwater requirements. Incredible, isn't it? The Hillsborough Environmental Commission estimated that the proposed buildings will increase the amount of stormwater flowing from the site by 1.4 million gallons, you know, for, in the first 24 hours of a 100-year storm. The other five warehouse proposals have similar flooding issues. This area of the township is mostly wet, marshy, and flood-prone terrain. It is the worst possible place for high-coverage land use. That is why it's essential that the proposed rules apply to any pending development application. Of course, the developers of these warehouses knew ahead of time of the DEP's plan to change the stormwater rules. As a result, Hillsborough received six warehouse proposals in a short span of time. The applicants rushed to submit their applications, thinking that this would protect them from the pending rule changes. The buildings, once approved, will stand for decades and will greatly contribute to regional flooding for years to come. These developments are a direct threat to our communities and giving them a pass on the updated flooding protection rules, as long as they already filed their flawed applications, would be a grave injustice. There should be no exceptions. As long as a permanent construction hasn't started, the new stormwater calculations should apply. We really need your help on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, the next person commenter listed is Gail Omen. And the next commenter is Louise. And the next commenter is Louise Yusachek. Okay, the next commenter is Annika Van Rossum.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Annika Van Rossum, A N N E K E, space, V A N R O S S U M, and I'm with Delaware Riverkeeper Network. I just wanted to start by saying the inland flood protection rule is certainly an achievement and a step in the right direction for the state of New Jersey in proper flood and stormwater management. But there are areas in these rules that need to be improved and additional regulatory requirements needed to ensure flooding and stormwater are addressed under these worsening conditions. First, no new and large expanded or elevated structures, no new impervious surfaces, and no fill should be allowed in the regulated floodplain. The floodplain is meant to be a sponge, and any infrastructure or fill prevents its natural ability to be a sponge. Secondly, removal of native vegetation, cutting of trees, and soil compaction in floodplains must be prohibited. Where floodplains and their riparian buffers have been disturbed, restoration to a natural vegetated condition must be required. Properly vegetated buffers in riparian zones that are filled with native plants are game-changing for controlling bigger storm events. Vegetated buffers reduce peak floods and hold riparian lands in place. Third, the regulated floodplain maps must be updated as the rules require, but the regulated floodplain must be based at the 500-year floodplain, not the 100-year floodplain, plus the additional water based on the proposed future rainfall calculations. The 500-year floodplain plus these future rainfall flows is a more accurate representation of where storm flows go and flood damages occur and will more accurately reflect climate impacts. And finally, funding for the Blue Acres Program must be a major investment by New Jersey. Socially and economically vulnerable communities are the most in danger from these flooding events and need the support of the state. New Jersey cannot prevent climate events, but it can and must take up the mantle to remove people from harm's way of flood disasters permanently by buying out land with structures and completely restoring the floodplain to natural conditions, allowing individuals to safely and financially move to a safer location. Thank you for your time, and we'll also submit written comment expanding on these points.
Great, thank you very much for your comments. Okay, next commenter is Teresa Warman.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good afternoon.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you so much. Vince, you and I appeared together in June of 2021 at the Columbia Law School Forum. We're now talking 18 months later. You presented these important timely rules 18 months ago to that panel by Zoom, and I was the moderator. So I'm a very patient person, and my last name starts with W. I don't want to repeat all the fabulous comments today, but I do want to focus on Bridge Point 8, West Windsor, because that's where my law office is. And like my, my neighbors, John Mulcahy, Nalufur Norondom, Darbury, Willa Inlander, Stacy Fox, we have all been caught on our flooded roads. And recognizing, you know, the special circumstances that face overburdened communities, Bridge Point 8 is right, right near a large apartment complex with renters who I do not believe were properly served with notice. I also want to point out that NJSA 40:55D/10.5, the time of application rule, contains an important exception for health and public safety. So focusing again on Bridge Point 8, it's on the record that 9,570 trucks and other vehicles will make their way through local roads, near public schools, near apartment complexes, every day. And the intersection of the two county roads, Quaker Bridge Road and Clarksville Road, are already given an F by the county. So it would be truly a disaster, not only for West Windsor, but for Lawrenceville, Princeton, Hamilton, for residents making their way through these roads if this seven warehouse complex was to go forward with approval. It's absolutely imperative.
I am, I am sorry, but if you could wrap up, thank you.
Sorry, it is imperative that the inland flood protection rules be adopted immediately without any grandfathering, and thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments and for being patient. All right, next commenter is Ray Watson. The next one listed would be Jan Weinberg. All right, next would be Tina Weiss House. Next commenter is Candace Wiggum. Okay, next commenter is Grace Wilder Teal. And the next commenter is Catherine Warland. Okay, that completes the list of, of everyone who has signed up to speak by the deadline. Is there anyone that signed up to speak by the deadline that I skipped over or you were unable to unmute yourself that you'd like to speak now?
And just briefly, we are going to work through those who signed up after the deadline.
Yeah, absolutely.
And anybody else who's remains.
Absolutely, everyone, everyone should be heard. Okay, so I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, just a procedural question. How does the public comment period work? And kind of what are the steps from here, just, just for awareness and transparency? Because a lot of people took time, I mean, great effort on the DEP part to put this forward. Obviously, a ton of interest, environmentally focused, folks concerned about, you know, mitigating the dangers to the community. Where does it go from here? Just before you continue on to the rest of the public comments?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for that.
And yeah, I would just keep it very brief.
Procedural. Yes, briefly, so, so during the 60-day comment period that we've established, which would be from December 5th to February 3rd, any comments received through the portal or through this hearing would be put into the record and then summarized and then responded to as we proceed with the adoption of, of the, of the regulations. So on filing with Office of the Administrative Law, the adoption document, we would have a response to every comment that's been raised by everyone.
Excellent. That's a, great to hear, refreshing. That's clearly not what happened in West Windsor when we had five hours of comments. It was just right to the vote, and so glad to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the question. Okay, um, next, so now we'll go to some folks that signed up recently. Barry Ableman.
Actually, we were on Brian Button.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Brian Button. Okay, next would be Ellie Gruber.
Thank you very much. I'm Ellie Gruber, speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of New Jersey. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to comment. We are a nonpartisan, public-interest organizations that takes positions on issues through study and consensus, and we support your policies that protect our natural resources and public health. The critically important thing here is that our state government in this rule is modeling and making regulations based on future projections of climate change. This is the only way we can protect the public from the worst impacts of flooding from increasingly intense storm events. We appreciate that the DEP has considered economic impacts, job impacts, environmental justice, and public safety. We support the balance between business and public interest. The League urges the DEP to adopt this rule immediately. However, deaths and damage from Hurricane Ida proves that highways and transportation infrastructure are not exempt from the impacts of major storms and deadly flooding. The exemption for the Department of Transportation should be removed. Climate change is real, and we're in a climate emergency. We need to plan now. The oceans are warming, sea level is rising, we've increased reef rainfall. Elevating the floodplain two feet is scientifically proven to predict more flooding based on future predictions. We supported the adoption of the inland flood rule under an emergency status last year. This rule needs to be implanted, implemented immediately and followed as soon as possible by amendments to the CAFRA regulations and the other regulations protecting our New Jersey residents. Until this rule is implemented, new development permits should not be granted. Thank you very much for giving me the chance to speak.
Thank you for commenting. Okay, the next commenter would be Nicole Jones. All right, the next one listed is Ashley Kerr. Okay. Next would be Grant Lewis. Okay, the next commenter would be Eleni Lit. And the final person on my list, James Ratakan. Okay, that concludes all those who have signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Who's, who's been waiting patiently?
And if you would, I'd ask that you just put your, your name in the chat so that we can track and monitor everybody who, who does want to speak. And we'll call on you in order of, of that.
Get a moment or two for folks to do that. All right, is anyone joined on the chat? Has anyone listed?
Nobody has listed yet, but I think we'll give it a few more minutes. And if you are on the phone and you can't access the chat, you can just unmute yourself, and we'll make sure you get on the list, which is star sex to unmute yourself.
We want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak, so if there's interest in providing testimony, this is your opportunity. All right, let's give another minute or so, and then, then we'll move on. I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity. Okay, well, we've given, we've given several minutes. And hearing no more comment, as the hearing officer, I will officially close the public hearing on the inland flood protection rule proposal. Thank you all so much for attending and providing your comments. We know how busy everyone is, and thank you very much for everyone's time and attention that you took today to comment on these rules. Thank you very much.
Vince, I sent you an email. Lauren, I did not have your email, so Vince, if you could pass it along to Lauren. And I should have this for you first thing Monday morning. And Lauren, when you send me your email, I will send you a courtesy PDF, so you don't have to wait for the office to put everything together.
Okay, thank you.